Good evening, everyone. Calling the meeting to order. We have a roll call, sir.
Mr. Capadia. Dr. Liliston.
Here.
Mr. Peters. Dr. Resnick. Mr. Slotman. Ms. Tracy. Ms. Williams Galliano.
Present.
Dr. Wilson. To the quorum.
Wonderful, thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News and the Times on January 4, 2024. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon Bios. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being recorded for the purposes of board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing on the YouTube Bulldog TV and the school district website, www.hvrsd.org. Members of the public who are interested in participating in public comment, we ask that you sign in prior to speaking. This will assist us with our record keeping. With that said, please join me with flag salute. Can I get a first and a second to approve the minutes for July 15? All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? The minutes are passed. Yes, I just want to take a moment to welcome our new board member, Sarah Tracy.
Hi.
So Tracy, for those you who may be newer to the district, or your kids are just aging in, Sarah Tracy has been with the school board previously and will be filling the remainder of the year prior to the election, but she is joining us back after how many? We won't. We won't count, but anyway, welcome back and thank you for putting your hat in the ring. All right. With that said.
So for my report today, I know that folks have been monitoring in the newspaper some of the responses to our referendum. We are going to be having a town hall, which will be virtual because that's what's most convenient for our parents, is that it's virtual and that we record it, especially once the school year starts, it's crazy. We understand that you have a lot on your plate. We will be answering questions in the webinar. There will be a panel of people available for your questions. I will be there. Mr. Colavita will be there. Our district architect will also be there, and this will be moderated so that you can ask all your questions, so we'll be available for that. I am going to go through some of the slides, though, tonight, because I wanted to make sure that we cleared up some misconceptions, misunderstandings about the referendum that were presented in the newspaper, and also, we want to just make sure that we're being as transparent as possible as we move through this process. Much of this is not new information to this community, that folks that have been able to make it to our meetings. We have been talking about this since the, you know, middle of last school year, as before we moved into this decision to appeal to the public with a referendum. So quickly, I'm going to go through some of these slides, and I know if you have questions, you'll present those to us in public comment. So just. Mic on over here. See, away from my big head. Okay, so. Yeah. Okay, so what is a bond referendum? A referendum is an opportunity for the. Is that one? I guess it is. This is an opportunity for the board to get ahead and plan for some of these big capital projects that we have in place when we can't keep pace with them with our regular general funds. What's good about going this approach for a referendum, when we ask the voters to borrow those funds by selling bonds, is that if this is approved, if the public okay's it and it's approved, then the district can get some funds back from the state with some of the projects that we've proposed. So we're going to talk about those projects here. So 25% of these projects that fit the criteria from the state, and Bob, you can jump in whenever you need to, as I'm talking, 25% of the projects that we propose will qualify for this local state aid. Taxpayers already pay into these funds, and other districts who go out for referendum, which many districts are doing that now, they're struggling the same way we are with inflation, with the expansion of our needs to spend and not being able to spend over the 2% cap. We're not keeping pace with the repairs that these buildings cost, and you can't access these funds that we all pay in unless you go through a referendum process. So yes, we can continue to do what we've been doing, which is pick them off one at a time, and we're losing ground as we do that. However, you won't have access to this if we keep doing it that way. So it's an opportunity to not just attack more projects at once, you can also get some cost savings that we return back to the taxpayer by going this route. It's a better way to plan, instead of, you know, we make a long list of things that we need to do, we prioritize what needs to be done first, then something happens we didn't plan for, and that sucks up the money. Our finance and facilities budget has been flat for a long time, and it's not keeping up with the inflation, the cost of things, the lead time to get things, all of the issues that we've had with our facilities. So this is a way to long-term plan for some of those things that we know we need to fix. And then finally, the timing. Folks said, why September? Why not do this in November with the regular election vote? Well, if we do it in September, we can get ahead of the other schools that are doing this in November and in the early spring. We can go out a bit early and hopefully start some of these projects that we need to do, like the expansion on Bear Tavern, for example, sooner than later, especially something you know is going to take a year or two to complete.
Yeah, if we are able to get this passed, we will be in construction mode next summer.
Absolutely. So most of this proposed referendum items are restoring and renovating our facilities that are very old. Most of these buildings, you know, are in a situation where things are failing. This building is approaching 100 years old, like this year, I think. Tollgate and Hopewell Elementary are all about 100 years old. We have two of our schools that were built, three, in the 60s. The newest school was 2004, was that built? Two, 2002. So now that even our new building is in need of some attention. So we're restoring some of these failing and obsolete systems, like our HVAC systems that are struggling and limping along. Oh, by the way, costing us more in energy because we have these inefficient systems, and they are failing, and also shoring up the building integrity to protect against extreme weather conditions, which we're feeling more and more of. In the face of all these repairs that we know we need to make because things are aging and failing over time, we have these sort of things that happen. This is Timberlane Middle School, where we had some pipes that were instructed by tree roots, and this has resurfaced. It's another issue. We're having, we have bathrooms set down at Timberlane right now for continued issues around big trees and things that were planted in our open courtyards. Some of them that were probably put there when I would have been a kid, and, you know, people meant well at the time, but putting a redwood in the middle of an area like this, not a good idea, right? So now it's in the building in the pipes. We had galvanized piping here that broke last year. I don't know if you noticed, half of the board office dug up, and we still have some repairs that we need to work towards. Well, we had more pipes break just recently this summer. So this kind of stuff throws a wrinkle in our plans, in addition to the work that we have that we know that we need to do that's ongoing. Three reasons why we need more space. One is a raising enrollment, and we are already starting to see folks enroll in our new developments that are coming in. Some folks are renting houses before their houses are even available in the new developments, and some are ready to move into some of those properties. I've already had to split a section at Bear Tavern, that the class size was up to 26 already, and at the elementary school, I mean, Tollgate Grammar School and kindergarten, because we were at 26. That's not something that we do here in this district, have these large class sizes, especially at the primary grades. So that is one of the reasons why we need expansion. Tollgate is not necessarily receiving the new development, but it's already tight. We already have tight space in that building. So one is renovating, I mean, expanding for that, the rising enrollment. The rising number of special support services that we offer requires more room, right? So that's another reason why we need to expand. Yes, according to the state, they come in with a measuring tape and say, if you have this much square footage, you should have enough room for your kids. They don't account for the special classes we have for autism, for students that may have dysregulation issues that they need to work through, and they need more room and an even smaller class size of one, two, maybe three, eight kids. They don't account for some of the other programs that we offer our students for calming rooms and all of the things that they need. So bringing kids back in a district where they belong, getting the education that we know they deserve, staying in-house is something that we, Mr. Nardo has been very integral in working on that, and we want to continue to do those things, but it takes more space. We offer kindergarten full day now, where we used to only offer it half a day. That requires more space. We've expanded our preschool offerings, and we're looking into even going further with that. That requires more space. So as we look at these things, and there is some funding that's available through the state for these, the building is used in a different way than it was in the past. And then finally, I already talked about maintaining the class size as best we can. At some point, it's going to get tough, but we're trying to maintain that class size. So that means that's using more rooms because you have more teachers. Right, so what President Williams Galliano was stating is to have kindergarten rooms and preschool rooms, they have to be equipped with bathrooms and sinks at the size of the child. Some of that stuff has been, we've been grandfathered, and we've been allowed to do at Tollgate and at Bear, but now that we have an opportunity to expand, we would equip all of those rooms to be able to receive kindergarten or preschool or primary grades, so that even if we put fifth grade in it, it's fine, but you can always go down to the younger grades and accommodate the growth in kindergarten and preschool. Thank you for that. All, I think we also covered, so we talked about the rising enrollment, we already talked about this one, so if you go to the next slide. There we go. And also protecting our students, right? We have students outside of our buildings in these trailers, which my kids went to school in trailers in another district. I'm not a fan of these. I don't like kids outside of the building for a lot of reasons. They're harder to cool, they're harder to heat, and also, if there's ever a crisis, I don't want our kids outside the building, especially if some of our youngest children are in these buildings, or some of our children with special needs are in these buildings. They are safer and it's better served if everyone is in the building. So these are not optimal. The ones at Tollgate would actually be removed. The students can stay in these while we're doing some of the work, but we want to remove the ones at Tollgate and actually expand the access around the building. In my newsletter that I shared with the community this weekend, Mr. Quinn is actually out there showing parents what we mean by providing access. Right now, emergency vehicles can't get all the way around Tollgate because of those trailers that are sitting there. There's like this little narrow, narrow space. They've complained about it for years, so it's an opportunity to correct that. And any spaces that are against this, that are outside learning spaces for our students can be moved and relocated, and we will do that, and that's part of the architect's plan, to relocate those with the help of the PTO. But we also want to avoid, away from these trailers, I'm talking about the main buildings now, we also want to avoid catastrophic failures that interrupt learning by doing some of these renovations that we're talking about. Just this past year, we had three major events toward the end of the year that we just dodged some serious stuff. One was the well died on us, the pump, the well pump over at Timberlane. We weren't sure if we were able to get another pump, so I actually got a call from the Director of Facilities saying, we're going to need to close Timberlane indefinitely. This is in the middle of the day. So I'm like, that's not, that's not something we can do. We've got to do something, right? I can't tell parents, kids aren't going to school, and there's indeterminate amount of time for how long they're out, right? We have to figure this out. We can't get another pump because it takes, you know, like, we were waiting on HVAC equipment that, what, took two years? And it came damaged, and then we had to start all over waiting. This is not something we can move quickly. Called all over the place into Pennsylvania, they actually robbed a motor from another piece that was sitting on somebody's yard and put it on the pump, right? Yeah, yeah, well, not robbed, but you know what I mean. They borrowed, and they were given by the company and they bought. Okay, they didn't steal it, but they took it off another item. And, look, I'm not above it right now, we're in trouble, no. But no, they actually had to take it from another item to repair the pump, and that's what's in the ground running right now, an old pump with a motor off of another pump that needs to be replaced, and we're waiting on that piece still, right? So what needs to not happen is, we have one system only. So in this referendum, our backup sister pumps now for Timberlane and Bear Tavern that's still on a well, right? I can't have your kids just going home like that unceremoniously, but if we don't get a handle of these projects, and Bob and I don't enjoy coming to you asking for this, we can't continue to do this, and we're going to continue to have problems that we can't fix quickly, on top of that, all happening at once. Then we had the fire trucks at Stony Brook. That was air-conditioned unit motor burning in the building that's on the referendum. We had burning at Bear Tavern, same thing, air-conditioned unit motor burning. We had to evacuate all the kids. We had it raining in Bear Tavern, roofs, that's on the referendum. And I know there's a misconception like, oh, these roofs were fixed on the last referendum. Roof systems on a school are very extensive, and we rarely replace them all at once. We do it in sections. Sections of the roof were placed, where roofs were replaced, and others were not. These are the areas that were untouched. Now that costs more money, we probably should have made the investment then, but that's hindsight, here we are now, and we need to fix these things now. We can't continue to keep kicking the can as we've been doing, because now it's becoming exponential, and we have to, we can't keep up.
You also have to remember that Stony Brook's roofs are on the referendum now. When we did this in 2016, they weren't expired yet. So we wouldn't have, it wouldn't have made sense to do them then, and a lot of those roofs are now coming to the end of their useful life. They weren't then, they are now.
And we just really, just missed a major catastrophe at Stony Brook, was flooding this past weekend with the rain. That same area that we need to do something about was flooding, and we had water in the school. So these are things that we need to address, we know they've been problems, and they're all happening all at once. So again, we've already talked about this, we're touching every building, and we're going to quickly go through what's happening if this should pass. So the high school, we're looking for replacing the roofs that weren't touched that are leaking. One of those roofs is over our pack, I'm really concerned about that. Restoring pavement over the, where the solar roof canopy parking lot is. Accessible bathrooms and concession stands for the stadium, I want to clear that up. So right now, bathrooms for the stadium over at the high school are porta-potties. There are bathrooms outside, around the corner, like down a little bit of ways closer to the building that people can travel to. The way schools work now, because of the people bringing weapons into games and things like that, we've changed our protocols for safety. Once you enter the gate of the field, you cannot leave and come back for any reason. So if someone needs to go to the restroom that is not interested in using our porta-potty, me, or is not able-bodied and can't get in and out of a porta-potty, they leave, they can't come back in. That is not the best experience for some of our grandparents, some of our people that are not able-bodied, some of our people that are not interested in going to porta-potty, right? So adding bathrooms was something that we decided, if we're going to do this, this is an opportunity to do that, and the architect suggested, well, if you're doing bathrooms, it's not much to add on the concession stands, now you have an opportunity to raise revenue. You're doing the bathrooms anyway. It's not much more to just put the concession stand and make it one standing thing. And then now, the band boosters can sell, the sports booster parents can sell, we can sell things for graduation, we can provide refreshments when you're dying out there during graduation and get your water and all those things. So that was an opportunity to just piggyback that on the restrooms. Accessible restrooms was the point, though, making sure that everyone had that access. And then finally, the HVAC improvements that we didn't do with the last referendum. Mm-hmm, thank you. Okay, the middle school, and we always call her Jan Brady, she doesn't get a lot of attention in the middle here. That front building has needed help since I was principal there. So replacing some of the roofs again, the ones that weren't done and covered in the last referendum, replacing exterior doors to align with the current safety standards on this, refurbishing that front entrance, there's a lot of trip hazards and uneven pavers that have heaved up. That canopy that's above the middle school doorway or entrance used to have little bubbles on them, you're not allowed to put them back because they're a safety hazard now. They were then because they blew away, right? So that whole area needs to be torn down and replaced, and it's needed that for some time. That pillar where Timberlane is written down the side is collapsing and crumbling and has to come down. So those are some of the things that we have on here. Replacement of the floor in the auxiliary gym to provide a safer surface for our kids because that floor is in bad shape and needs to be replaced. So those are all of the things that we have for Timberlane. Yes, I'm going to address the turf later, because the turf is near Timberlane, but it sits on the back end of that property. Bear Tavern Elementary School, same, I talked about the renovating the pumping station, the backup pump and well in case of failure, restoring the entrance walkway canopy, same thing, there's no protection from the weather there, the roofing that needs to happen in there, replacing exterior doors for safety standards, replacing the obsolete air-conditioned unit, that one in the main office is one of the, that one that caught on fire this past spring, and then some interior improvements, replacing the classroom doors. Again, they're the original doors, and they're old, and they need to be brought up to code. Doors that kind of shed on their own, locked differently than what we have now. Build a tin classroom addition, we talked about that already, to address the increase in enrollment, and then modernize the cafeteria and the hallways to allow for more traffic flow. Hopewell Elementary has a little fewer projects, because we touched some of the other projects during the last referendum, but roofing, replacing the exterior doors, the air-conditioned unit at Hopewell Elementary has been limping along a long time. We've had some real issues with that, and just basically missed having to close because of some extreme weather with that one. And then the classroom doors, again, being upgraded, and then upgrading the kindergarten classrooms to make sure that they meet the state's size requirement. Stony Brook, roofing, exterior doors again, the drainage problem at the back of the school, we're going to work on, replacing the air-conditioned units that are obsolete or getting outdated, and install a chiller to supplement the geothermal system with the raising temperatures we're facing, it just can't keep up with the heat the way it is now, so we need to add a new chiller to be able to supplement. Tollgate, we're going to replace some roofs if we're able to do this, replace exterior doors again, widen the driveway for better traffic flow and for access for emergency vehicles, I spoke about the air-condition in there as well, needs attention, replacing electrical equipment to better control and protect the school's power system, and to build the sixth classroom addition to again bring kids into a better learning environment inside. Okay, so what would this cost the taxpayers? Eighty-seven million for the improvements. Twenty million, point three of that will lower the impact on the taxpayer, that's what the state will match. The property tax impact will be anywhere between 433 to 515 annually, and I have a chart, well, I'll get into that a little, let you look at that a little more closely by Burrow. And so the turf field, I know that there's, that's, there's been a lot of discussion about the turf field. The reason why we want to bring a turf field to our campus is to keep our students on campus. Right now, they go to Twin Pines, they're just dropped off, so if there's a weather situation, if there's an emergency, if someone's hurt, our trainer is on campus, our security guards are on campus as are administrators. So for our safety, we would like the kids to be back on their own turf. Turf is better for our athletes to play on, it's healthier for them as athletes, and if we were going to explore this turf field and you said yes, we would go about it in a green way, where we would look for a company that has greener turf with no PFOS and that it's recyclable, and I know people are concerned about the chemicals, there's chemicals maintaining a natural turf field. You're spraying paint, you're spraying chemicals to keep the grass, so that's still going to happen, less of that happens when you have a turf field. You don't have to paint it as often, and it's not washing away, you don't have divots and holes and things like that that the kids can get hurt on. So this is really better for our parents, our students, our student athletes, our marching band students who use it, and it's also an asset to the community, just like Twin Falls fields are always being used by recreation and travel teams for tournaments. That would alleviate the stress on our one field that people like to use, spread it across two, and then it'll be something that the whole community can use. 1.6 million of this is going to be covered by the state aid, we didn't know if they would cover any of it, but because it is addressing the drainage issues that are over there, they're willing to give us that much to support this upgrade of our turf field, which will improve the kids' access as well. Bob, did you want to add anything to that?
The current field that we did put in last summer is also, that's where we got into the greener product, that is a PFOS-free field at the current time, so we're happy about that.
Okay, and then finally, which is separate from the referendum, but it's part of our general budgeting that we spend during the course of the year, is our per pupil cost. People say that we have a very high per pupil cost rate, and why is that so? And the reason why it's so is because of our smaller class size. I just said that I added two more teachers because we weren't comfortable with 26, in other districts, you would have 26, 27 kids in a classroom. That's not something we're comfortable with here in Hopewell. Our class sizes generally are under 20, like 16, 17, 18 kids in a class. Occasionally, we will hit a 24, 25 in a class, it's usually one section or one teacher, and it's an anomaly, and if we can split it, like it happens in the summer, we do. If it happens during the course of a school year, it's a little harder, hard to find quality teachers once the school year starts, so sometimes we have to ride it out. But that class size is the number of teachers, which is salaries, health benefits, which makes up over 80% of our budget. So that cost can be cut if we cut programs, and we offer an expensive amount of programs. The state talks about adequacy. We are well above adequacy in our class size, in the number of paraprofessionals we have here in the district, in the number of programs that we offer, nurses in every building, media specialists in every building, music, two types of music, sometimes two music teachers in a lot of the buildings, including elementary schools. That doesn't happen in a lot of other districts, and that's why their per pupil cost is less. They don't have steam facilitators, they don't have in-house clinicians necessarily, they don't have relationships with comprehensive mental health, where we're providing services to the families that can't afford it. They don't do all of these things, and these things have a cost. The number of the electives, AP courses, clubs, the fact that we have a comprehensive high school with wood and auto shop, it's expensive. So these are the things that parents in this district demand. I got several emails when parents were kind of concerned about the class size in kindergarten at Tollgate, when they showed up to kindergarten class and saw there were 24 kids, we were already panicked, because we don't do 26, 25 kids in a kindergarten class here. It's rare that that happens. So that's what causes our cost to be so high. That's something that we've come to expect, that the parents here move here for, in addition to all the extensive special education programs we have, is what our kids deserve and they people move here for. So, and Paul, could you talk to folks a little bit about the number of kids that we have in classified versus other districts?
Hi, everyone. So we do have a higher percentage of students receiving special education services, and over the last, I'd say, 10 years, we have seen an increase, especially in move-ins. There is a point in June last year where we had, over a two-week period, we had 14 students register for this coming September who are receiving special education services. So, you know, we take pride, we work really hard to provide programming within our district. We. We've really worked and dedicated a lot of time and training to provide, you know, literacy instruction for our students with significant learning disabilities, K through twelfth grade. We have special classes, autism, emotional regulation. We have, we have a lot of inclusion opportunities. We don't have any self-contained programs because we really want our kids to be able to access and their least restrictive environment and being with their age-appropriate peers as much as possible. So we do do a lot. We do a lot more than most of our surrounding schools.
And so as a result, we, people come here seeking that service that we do a really good job delivering to our community. I get, I field calls all year long with people wanting to pay tuition for these services. And I say no because I know that we're already stretched, right? But this is something that people seek out about Hopewell because we do a good job. That is why our per pupil cost is so high because it goes directly to serving your kids. Right? So I just wanted to make sure that everyone's clear on that. It's not sort of us wasting money. It's tied up in a lot of salaries and benefits for the people who deliver these programs.
And just to point out, we do, in my opinion, we do among the best in the area regarding our health benefits and healthcare that we provide to all staff members. We're a self-insured organization, which means we don't pay premium to a carrier, we pay claims. And if we are, we have a good year, the money stays in the district. If we have a bad year, we're on the hook for that. But we do have secondary insurance for that. A lot of folks have said, well, why don't you just switch to the state plan of healthcare? Costs are rising too high. Well, we're doing way better than the state health benefit plan. And if you read in the paper over the last several months, the state health benefit plan is going up sixteen percent in January. So we've done our homework. We've managed to keep our healthcare costs lower than a lot of our neighboring districts. It's just the inflationary cost towards healthcare right now in the country is skyrocketing. And that is just, that is what's driving. Even though we're doing the best we can to contain it, it's out of control right now.
Thank you. Okay, so here's a breakdown of the projects. The turf field and the concession stand slash restroom. Folks were kind of saying, okay, that's a nice to have, but you know, I argue that it's something that really we should consider doing for the benefit of our students and our families that come visit our fields. Is only nine percent of this overall pie. Ten percent of it is the addition to Tollgate. I took it apart from the Bear Tavern addition, so you can see how much that is. Bear Tavern is twenty percent of that. And then sixty-one percent of it is, the rest of it is just infrastructure things. Roofing, HVAC, doors, restrooms, the backup well systems, the main entrance repairs, upgrades, and other repairs that are just the things that need to be done in addition to these. So, yes, yes. If we don't do this? Um. I'm sure Finance Facility can share what's been going on all summer, which has been not good, is we're going to have more of that picture of like Timber Lane with the floors open up. We're going to have more of that. We're going to have this interruption of student learning because when things fail, we're going to have kids evacuated out of buildings when things fail. We're going to have buildings flood and we're going to have classrooms not available. We're going to be running kids and rerouting them. We're going to have air conditioning that doesn't work on an extremely hot day and teachers are running from room to room to try to stay cool. That's what we're going to have. And we don't enjoy coming to you with this, but I feel like I would be remiss by riding off into the sunset, just kind of putting Band-Aid and duct tape and doing whatever, robbing parts off of things, right? Until I retire and then I leave you in an even worse situation. We are literally doing this to fight for what your kids deserve. And I can't tell you what to do, yes or no. It's really your decision and I'm going to make it work no matter what as best I can. But this is me telling you that we're in trouble if we don't do this. And I don't want it to affect you who are sending your kids here. It's really, it's really going to be tough. And for those, you know, who don't have kids in the district anymore, we all kind of, as community members, support the school districts because it does help us with our, with the value of our house, right? But also that social contract where, you know, people paid for my kids to go to school. I'm going to support the schools for them because people supported the schools for me. So I'm hoping that we can do that because it's what's really best for our young people. And again, there's not a lot of sex appeal on here. It's all things that we know we need to do, we've known we need to do, and we kind of keep kicking the can down the road because we can't afford it. So this is, this is the amount that the state is going to support of this referendum. We will not bond all of this at once, so that doesn't mean all eighty-seven million will come all at one time. You bond out as you do projects. And then here is that bigger graph I promised you. I want you to be able to see it. The impact on the taxpayer. And for those members of the community that are senior citizens, there are waivers for people based on certain income levels. Is that correct, Bob? That they can apply for. So voting information, the county must receive your mail-in vote application by September tenth. In my newsletter, I know there's a lot of legal ease in these ballots. That's how it was written the last time. It's written by lawyers. But basically, what you're voting on is what I just showed you, those items I just showed you. So check out my newsletter if you have any questions about that language. September sixteenth, the county must receive your vote-by-mail application by 3:00 PM on the sixteenth. And then the polls will be open on the seventeenth. All voting will take place in person in one place at the Pennington Fire Company. We wanted to make it convenient for everyone with plenty of parking and also no confusion on who goes where. So we've had them look at that space. They are sure that they can accommodate us and make sure there's plenty of parking on the seventeenth.
And this was done in conjunction with the Mercer County Election Officials Office. And they suggested that we do it for this type of a vote, to do it all in one location, so there is no confusion.
Mm-hmm. And so this, I know that there's questions out there. Feel free to reach out to any of us if you have a question. We're here to answer your questions. We will have a town hall on September ninth that will be virtual. But you don't have to wait till then if you have questions. You can visit our website that has all the frequently asked questions as you email us these questions. We don't just answer it for you. We also make sure we post it online for people to see later because if you have the question, someone else may. You can also follow us on social media. We're pushing out information all the time there. And I've already talked about the town hall. There's one more thing I wanted to talk about. And Bob, could you find that one slide about the money in the bank? So there's always this misconception that we have a lot of money sitting in the bank that we kind of sit on. And any one point in time when we're audited, the auditors may come in and they'll look at what we have in our reserves, right? Okay, so do you want to walk everyone through this quickly?
So this was pulled from a snapshot in time at our audit. This was our position on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, where we did have total fund balances as defined by the state of fifteen point nine million dollars. Of that fifteen point nine million, eight million dollars of it is money that was sitting in our capital reserve, kind of our emergency fund should a boiler break, you know, those kinds of things, outside the realm of a referendum-type thing. We actually are going to be pulling money out of our capital reserve to handle another area of Timber Lane that we had to dig up. You were joking about that, but we weren't. We actually did have to dig up Timber Lane yet again this summer for more pipe issues. And we also have what's called a maintenance reserve account. It's not quite a capital project, but a smaller type project of ninety-one thousand dollars. So that is money that's set aside. That's close to, you know, eight, eight point one million dollars. That is money that's sitting in the bank, but it's restricted. It can't be used for anything but capital projects. And the board assigned that money there through a vote. It's not something that I can do on my own. It's done in conjunction with the Finance Facilities Committee and the Board as a whole. And the only way the money can be withdrawn is by a board vote. And also, the project has to be approved. You need to get state approval to be able to pull the money out. The six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars at the top are monies that were at the end of two thousand and twenty-three. For example, we ordered a bottle and the bottle didn't arrive on June thirtieth. It arrived on August first. That money carries over from one year to the next and is reserved to be used on that one thing. And that is an audited number. So that money to me is not sitting in the bank. It's just sitting there waiting to pay for the things that have already been ordered. The four point seven million dollars are monies that were left over from two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three and also revenues that we did not anticipate getting. There are revenues that come in from the state for transportation, for special education, extraordinary services. Those things, those things come in after the fact and we are able to reserve them and we use them to help fund the next year's budget. So as one of our finance committee members noted, so we are using money from this year to pay for next year. Not, not the best thing to do, but that's what we've been doing to stay ahead of the game, all right? We're over, we're, we have a lot of things in our budget that are not, that are above and beyond. So that's how we cover it. We try to scrim and save and generate savings from year to year. The last number is the state permits you to keep up to two percent of your audited expenditures. And that's your true rainy day fund. That can be used for anything, but you still need Commissioner of Education approval. You have to demonstrate that you've utilized every bit of the current budget that's there. Then you can tap into that money. So that is truly a rainy day fund. Two percent over about an eighty-five million dollar spend is not a whole lot of reserve. So we just felt that we wanted to kind of explain what those balances are. We do not have sixteen million dollars worth of money to be able to be used for anything that we should desire to use it for.
And so we were doing, when I was talking to some folks and just putting it in lay terms, it's sort of like looking at your bank account right after you get paid, right? On the first and the fifteenth, it looks like I have a lot of money in the bank until my husband starts cutting the checks, right? And paying the bills. That's what this is in a snapshot in time. Quite frankly, it's a lot less than that right now, you know, once all the bills get paid. And even, what we have is not enough on the amount of properties that we're trying to maintain. Having fifteen, eight, eight million to fifteen million is not enough to have squirreled away when a project like Timber Lane is probably going to hit the million-dollar mark by the time we're done. And this is the second time we're digging up that building in a year. So I know that sounds like a lot of money. It's not. And you certainly can't reroute it and pay teacher salaries or anything else with it because that's not what the state will allow us to do with this money.
Again, there are a lot of restrictions. The state doesn't allow you to keep that money set aside to be able to use as you see fit. You need to justify any withdrawal from that two point four million at the bottom and the eight million is capital reserve. It all has to be approved at multi-levels before it can be expended.
I know we talk about the importance of... Yeah, I know we talk about the importance for the educational experience of our special needs kids, of keeping them in district whenever possible, but I'm going to be a money man here for a second. Paul, what's the average cost roughly when we do have a child?
Out-of-district student, the average cost when we don't include transportation is around anywhere from seventy-five to two hundred thousand dollars a year.
Per student?
Per student.
Right. So we're not, I just wanted to... And I'm not trying to diminish the importance of the educational experience of keeping them here, but that is not necessarily a cost the district can reduce by looking at alternatives.
Oh, by sending folks out? And, and, and no, it's going to be more expensive and, and they don't do the job that we do necessarily, right? Because, you know, some of them will deal with some of the issues that a child is having, but our kids are very high-performing and they're not getting what they need academically. And we do want our kids in the least restrictive environment if possible. Some kids do need out-of-district placements even at, I don't care if it's three hundred thousand, right? If that's what they need, that's what we need to provide. But a lot of these things, I feel like we can do a job in-house and a better job in most cases.
Yeah, I just wanted to make that clear that even though it is a significant cost to our...
Mm-hmm. It's a better investment.
We have to provide those services and it is less expensive to provide them in district than that percent of them.
So it is. But again, we're looking at each child and making sure they get what they deserve, which is a free and appropriate public education. And if that means that this child needs to go to an out-of-district placement to meet their needs, then we're going to make sure they get that. As well as with our, like our autism classes, per the New Jersey code, we cannot exceed six children in that classroom. So we have to adhere to the code as well to make sure that we're meeting their needs.
All right, moving on, we are going to have a presentation by Dr. Polixis.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Are we presenting the data on our New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, also known as NJGPA? Just a little background on this assessment. This spring was the second year that NJGPA was administered and it counts for, and the second year that it counts for a high school graduation requirement. However, for, since, as I mentioned, this is a graduation requirement. However, if students don't pass the NJGPA...
Can you zoom on it? There we go. I don't think for the other ones you need it, just for that one.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, there we go. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. So as I was, as I mentioned, the NJGP... Oh, just kidding. I don't know. Okay. The NJGPA is a high school graduation requirement. However, the state has put forth two other alternative pathways. So if students don't pass NJGPA, then they have two other pathways that they can fulfill the requirement for. But in order to be eligible for those pathways, the students must at least sit for the assessment. So some of these alternatives, so if they, if they sit and they don't pass the assessment, then they go onto the second pathway, which is to meet certain scores on other assessments, such as the PSATs, Accuplacer, SAT, and ACT. And then if students don't receive those scores on those other alternative assessments, then there is a portfolio option. So really, the take-home message here is that even if the students don't pass NJGPA, we're going to get them to be able to fulfill that requirement with one of these pathways. That has never been an issue. Yeah, I don't, I think... Do you want to just, like, exit out and then go back into it, maybe? Okay, once, once we get this up, I will review the math and the ELA data. Thank you, sorry for the technical difficulties. There we go. No, 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 back, back. Okay, so I'm going to begin by talking about the NJGPA math data. Okay. So the way I've arranged this presentation is, as I mentioned, this is the second year that this test has been in administration. So I only have two years' data. And so I only have the data from last year and this year for the district, and I only have the data comparable to the state. So I don't have other districts' performance on this assessment. So I'm just putting this disclaimer out as we go through the data. So overall readiness, in 2024, the average score for the state was 735 to pass, and the average score for the district was 759. This was very similar to the 2023 data, in which the average score for the state was 734 versus Hopewell Valley, which was 761. So overall this year, 77% of our students were graduation-ready versus 55% of the state, which were considered graduation-ready. Okay, yeah. So readiness by gender for math. So overall, there was no difference between male and female readiness level. All non-binary students were graduation-ready. But please note that in last year's data, there were no students who identified as non-binary. That's why there's those zeros on the presentation. This shows the breakdown of graduation readiness by race. So in terms of the class of 2025, the racial breakdown is 4% Hispanic, Latino, 15% Asian, 2% Black, 76% White, and 3% Two-plus races. So overall, it seems that students, regardless of race, were more graduation-ready in last year, in 2023. We are continuing to look at the standards document that we were given to ensure that we are thoroughly covering all the standards that were assessed in this assessment. This is the breakdown by economic status. Please note that students who are identified as economically disadvantaged comprise 2.3% of the class of 2025. And overall, as compared to last year's data, students who are not economically disadvantaged are more graduation-ready. Readiness by students with disabilities. So just to give you some data in terms of the class of 2025, 20.2% of students have IEPs in that class. And so students who were identified with no disability are at a 90% readiness. Students with a 504 are at an 89% readiness, while students with an IEP are at a 23% readiness. This information was shared with pupil services so that they could do a deeper dive to see if there are specific standards to focus on, provide more support to those students. Okay, so I'll now be reviewing the ELA data or the language arts data. So this year, the average score for the state was 767, while the average score for Hopewell Valley was 771. So overall, our district is at an 86% readiness rate. So this was a slight decrease from last year with a readiness of 89%. However, in both years, our district has outperformed the state. In comparing the '24 to '23 results, the percentages are not significantly different. However, it seems that females continue to have a higher percentage of readiness and performance as compared to males. And again, as I mentioned before, we did not have any students who identified as non-binary last year. Again, that's, that's why the zeros are there. This shows the breakdown of graduation readiness by race for last year and this year. And so overall, there was a slight increase in readiness for our Asian and Black students. This was the readiness for economic status for ELA. And again, it seems that our economically disadvantaged students were slightly more graduation-ready as compared to last year's data. So they did slightly better this year. And then for disability, this is a comparison from last year and this year. And overall, students without a disability continue to have a higher graduation readiness. And the readiness levels are higher for ELA as compared with the math data. So what are our next steps? So we have shared this data with the administrative team, who will then share it with the teachers. And as I mentioned at EdProgram last week, when we receive this data from the state, we don't really receive a lot of information. We just really receive if this, what the students' score were, and if they were graduation-ready or not graduation-ready. This year, in comparison to last year, we did receive a document, but it's broken down by standards. So that will give us some data to then look at as a team to see, to ensure that all of the standards are being covered prior to the administration of the assessment, as well as to see which standards maybe we need to hone in on to help better prepare our students. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for this really detailed presentation, Dr. Pelixis. I really appreciate this. Would you go back to the slide that looks at math readiness by race?
Sure.
So I think one of the things that's really helpful about presenting the data broken out by gender and race and economic status is that we can really begin to hone in on where we're seeing our challenges. And this was just a quick look at this, but what really stood out to me is that there appears to be a big drop among Hispanic students. And my guess is that that's driving the 6% drop that we saw overall. So I'm wondering if you can share a little bit about what you think might be happening there? And is that aligning with what we're seeing in other sort of similar assessments?
So I, you know, and so just to put, only 4% of the class is comprised of that demographic. So what we're looking at specifically, when we talked about this at EdProgram, was to look at the different students specifically for that class to identify where, where we can support them more to almost... I mean, I believe if good pedagogy is good pedagogy, so if it supports one student, it should support all students. But we want to look specifically at Hispanic and Black students and see where, you know, where maybe are there, are there any patterns we're noticing in terms of, like, consistent standards that, that are falling short? And kind of be able to put in interventions to address those patterns. I do, in terms of, you know, we have not received all of the NJSLA data, but I would say that this is pretty consistent for some of the other standardized assessments that we have. One other thing to just point out with the math. So with English, they, all the students follow the same sequence. So they take English 9, English 10, English 11, English 11. But with math, it's varied. So these students who are sitting for this assessment, they're in 11th grade. So some might be, have already, who might be in AP Calculus, BC, or some of them will be in Algebra II. So, you know, there is that varying, you know, exposure to different math concepts, which I just think is important to note as compared to English.
Yeah, I have a quick one over here. I'm going to use this microphone. I don't have one by me, so. Can you go back to the, sorry? Can you guys go back to the 77% graduation-ready slide? I guess that was one of the first ones? Let me see if I'm, okay. And this is for everything, right? When that says overall...
That was for, for all of them, for math and for ELA.
Okay, so I guess what I would be interested in seeing if this data is available is, and I'm just trying to figure out, like, a comparable. How do we look at like districts like ours?
We don't have that. I agree, I know.
Well, I, okay, if we don't have it, that's fine, but maybe we think about it... I hate to say this out loud, maybe I don't. Per pupil cost to this number? Or something to that effect? If we can look at other districts that have a per pupil cost similar to ours, and then look at what the, what that looks like? I'm just trying to think about how we can show, I mean, on paper versus the state grade. It's not an equitable comparison to compare us to the state. But we should look at how we can compare ourselves to other districts like ours, characteristics, attributes to be determined. I don't know if any other board members have any thoughts on this, but...
At some point, this will be published out. At some point, they will start giving us these things, and it will be published. There's a lot of factors that go into that. Not apples, oranges, or limes, but it's certain components. Because it depends on their population, right? So that's why the state breakdown is better compared to the state.
Yeah, absolutely. I guess my question, just to mark inquiry, is are there any forums for, like, superintendents or Dr. Pelixis, your peers? There, the discussion is happening, and you can get a feel for other districts in comparison, where we don't have the public data being released, but we can have peer-to-peer conversations?
So we meet the superintendent's curriculum every week for Mercer County, and we talk about things, and we, we've mentioned to the state. You know, because even within Mercer County, it's very diverse in terms of apples, apples and oranges. But we, we talk about, like, we need this more comparable data, and we pass it on to the state. So that's one thing that we've really been advocating for is just, you know, this is, you know, I feel like we're looking at this just with, like, such a microscopic lens, like, because we, we don't have that, that comparable data. So, I mean, we, you know, we don't really share our data at these meetings. Just...
I just feel like, and I might be overthinking this too much, but I just feel like we probably look at this and say, like, what are definition of successes? And we're all going to say 76.7 isn't good enough, right? We're always going to say that, right? We know that. But we have to figure out, like, what's the measuring stick? Because it's not the state, like, great, phenomenal. Like, we're, we're comparing ourselves to districts that are nothing like ours. But we should try to figure out how we can do that. And I understand, like you're saying, Mike, there's a whole bunch of metrics and...
There's a whole lot.
There's a whole lot there. But at the same time, let's just start looking at a way to figure out different samples of like schools and try to do it somehow.
Yes, well, some of this is, first of all, you're not in a Hopewell. We are not. Only 76% of our kids, 77% of our kids are ready for graduation. We know that we have a very high in the 90th percentile graduation rate. We know our students go off to some of the best universities and colleges. They outpace the state in APs and honors courses and those sorts of things, right? I mean, we, we know that. Some of this is a cultural attitude that we have to these standardized tests, in these high-stakes tests. Some of this, and Drew's nodding, are kids coloring, or opting out themselves out of the test, or not showing up on a test day and some of that. So we need to work on that as a community, as a community.
No, I just wanted to say, you asked the question that I don't think we've been answering, which is what is the measuring stick we're using? This is a brand-new test that's been administered only for the last two years. I can tell you, students, it's also administered, correct me if I'm wrong, at the end of your junior year.
It's like March, April, yeah, March, junior year.
It's like a time of year when we have a 97% graduation rate. Like, we know that 76% of our students are not graduation-ready. We have more than that. So I think we do really have to take some of the results with a grain of salt. I, I will say, the statistics we're seeing around Black and Hispanic students are recurring, and we see that across standardized tests, across all of our metrics. So I think that point really does stand. And, and we do have to make sure we're actively intervening. We talked a lot about that in that meeting. But I think that's really important for us to note, is that when this test is taking place, how new it is, and yes, I agree, our, our students' attitudes towards standardized tests. And it's not new, this is just how it's always been. When Park started up, we had the same exact issues. You can go through every iteration of a standardized test. So I think right now it's hard to, this is a pretty not accurate assessment of our students.
And, you know, it didn't count for a long time, right? The kids could, okay, we can take this test, it's a pilot, and then we can use our AP scores or our SAT scores and all these other scores. Now it counts. So part of this is going to be working with the high school, making sure that folks are sitting for the test or taking it seriously, because I know we perform better than this. This is not, you know, this is not a good snapshot. So, you know, it's, it's another measure, but it's not the only measure. And I wouldn't put all our eggs in this basket. The state will come out with a, you know, eventually comparing districts to districts. And, you know, Vicki, you can ask, I don't know how much you're going to get out of folks, but certainly, we all know we can do better than this. But there are some pervasive issues that keep showing up across, as we triangulate across all the different measures that we offer, including internal benchmarks. We keep seeing those same populations that we have a hard time reaching. Yes, that are underperforming.
I think the answer to your question is, Mark, we're going to have to continue to, to demand better. Well, and, and again, this is a two-year, you know, T minus two years or plus two years that this has been in play. Continue to press forward. Thank you, Dr. Pelixis. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move into our first public comment. And again, just a reminder that we ask you to sign in at the podium before you speak. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district's administration. Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask that you sign in prior to your speaking, and this will assist us with our record-keeping.
A reminder, some, some doing the timekeeping. That's a 30-second warning, and that's your time is up.
Got it.
Hi, my name is Christine Rule, and I'm from Hopewell Township. I'd like to welcome the new board member. However, I'm a little bit confused. I was at the board interviews, and unless I missed it, I, there was only one candidate who was interviewed, and it was not Sarah. And I thought all applicants were required to be present at the interviews. Can you please explain how this was possible? How many candidates did the board vote on? And how did each board member vote? This is the third board member in the past couple of years that the board has selected and not the voters, and we deserve more transparency. I also want to address the $87 million bond referendum. As you know, Hopewell Township approved new housing developments and entered into a pilot agreement with a developer that gives the developer and the new housing residents a 30-year tax break. while the rest of us have to make up for the loss in tax revenue and added expenses. The township has promised to give the school their fair share, but these promises are not binding and have proven to be completely meaningless. I was at the board meeting in February of 2022, when you were warned that this could happen, and no action was taken to protect us taxpayers. Hopewell Township should be complete, should be contributing a substantial portion for the expansion of Bear Tavern, which is roughly 20% of the referendum. Also, why wasn't this referendum split into two chunks? The work that is absolutely necessary and the work that is optional? None of us want to have our children learning in failing buildings, but we also don't need all of the optional items. It all adds up. An $87 million is a huge ask for this small community. Switching gears to the timing of the election, the fact that the taxpayers are being forced to vote in a special election less than 50 days before the general election says that you don't care about wasting our money or our time. Perhaps the real reason for inconvenancing taxpayers is that school referendums are easier to pass during a special election, which typically have a lower turner, lower voter turnout, especially when there is a hotly contested presidential election, as Board Secretary Bob Colavita stated in response to this question I had back in February. To wrap up, there was a comment in a recent Mercer Me article made by members of this board that said, "The concerns of this community, the concerns this community is sharing is long on complaints and short on solutions." That statement is simply not true. These concerns have been brought up to you multiple times, spanning many years, and you dismissed our concerns and suggestions. Not one optional project was removed. The election remains in September, and you still have an empty promise of money from the township. Thank you.
Kate Hamm, Hopewell Township. I have two things that I would like to touch on. The first is the presentation from Dr. Politzis. I think that I'm reading things correctly, but every single graph that I saw there showed me that we have more students who were not ready for graduation in 2024 than 2023. So if that be correct, in which I believe I'm reading it correctly, I know there's a hot topic about the money that we're spending per pupil, and I know that the public is going to ask, if we are spending $26,000 per pupil, why are the numbers in 2024 for those who are not graduation-ready higher than those in 2023? I know I am not a test-taker fan, but if we're going to look at that and use the information and the data from that, then we have to also recognize that our numbers of non-graduation-ready are going up instead of going down. So I'm kind of looking for an explanation as to why that is then occurring. My other comment or question regarding the referendum and the turf field, which seems to be the hot topic. I am 100% for safety, would love to have our students back here. However, I'm a little confused because I've heard that we can invite other Hopewell Valley programs to have revenue and to rent it out to other programs. And I believe I heard the same thing about the PAC when that was done, is that we would utilize that for revenue. However, we stopped doing that and opening it to other organizations because of the way they were trashing it and the way that they've left it. So my question is, how are we going to make sure that a turf field, if it is built, is taken care of by the individuals, especially given it's an outside, unless you're gonna put it in a cage and lock it, given it is outside and free to the community? How are you going to assure that it is going to be taken care of, whereas the PAC was not? And so you discontinued utilizing outside revenue?
Hi there. Uh, my name is Jen DiDonato. I live in Hopewell Township. So I attended the public board meeting for the Mercer County Commissioners last week. I heard some serious concerns from the superintendent's questions. Walkerworthy. He said that he did not budget for the Hopewell Valley special election, which he estimated at upwards of $50,000. And that the, that he only had 30, a 30-day warning from the school board. Big stress concern about the manpower that it will take to calculate this and the enormous amount of work for their staff just one month ahead of a very big general election. He went out to say that his office is shelling out a lot of money over the costs upfront until Hopewell can pay them back. Conversely, adding the question, the general election would oppress them nothing. The county clerk, Paula Salamani, said sometimes this high cost will sway a district from going out for special election date outside of the normal election parameters, but at other times, they prefer not to have their general November ballot in order to separate it from the other items. After the meeting, we spoke to the county clerk and the superintendent of elections, who both agreed that the estimated total for the referendum would likely be closer to $150,000 when all is said and done. I have a few questions. Number one, it appears as though you have included the price in your referendum total, $87,150,000. Although I'm wondering, if the referendum doesn't pass, did you budget this cost in? I'm assuming that you will still have to pay it back if it passes or not. Number two, if you've known about the referendum since the middle of this year, then why did you only give the superintendent of election 30 days' notice to prepare? Number three, you mentioned the need to move the vote up by one month for the best price saving, suggesting that that, that weeding an extra month would significantly increase costs. Can you provide taxpayers with a cost analysis for comparing savings from moving up the vote against additional expenses of holding a special election? In other words, will the cost of the special election truly outweigh the savings gained by voting earlier? I, I agree that the upgrades, the upgrades are needed, and the plan actually really does look great. And if I had more time, I would go into that. I do appreciate every, every effort you've put into this. Um, it's just very unfortunate that the precedent, uh, the predicament that the township has put you in regarding the pilot fund. I think that it can just be put into a more reasonable manner and maybe a smaller burden to your existing taxpayers. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm here to talk about the referendum. And I noticed your reason on, posted on your page.
Can you introduce yourself?
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry. I'm Beth Charline, 91 Titus Mill, Hopewell Township.
Thank you.
So your reason for the referendum is for planning ahead. I had to think about that. And you said that state aid is the compelling reason to put maintenance items on a bond referendum. Well, I just think that's ridiculous. That is like such bad financial planning, I can't even believe it. And state aid is not free money. It comes from tax dollars. And reasonable people put money aside for big product, projects. They don't wait until it's a disaster and then put out a referendum to people who can't afford it. Nobody can afford this right now. I think you really need to rethink it. I know you talk about that it's always for the kids. And I personally moved to New Jersey and came to Hopewell Township because the school districts like Princeton were one of the best. Right now, Princeton is still ranked two, and Hopewell Township isn't even on the map. And I looked at some of the ratings, proficiency ratings. Math is 55%, reading is, English is 63%. And to me, that's like a D and a C minus, if you think about it. I mean, your job is to prepare our kids to be productive and successful members of society. And less than half of them are ready. And I think that's a shame. It's really a shame. I wanted to mention, like somebody else has, about the fiscal impact study for Park, the new development. They expect 392 new students, and it costs us $7.7 million per year. I hope you're budgeting for that, because there's no money in the pilot revenues that are gonna come from that. The reason why the pilot tax dollars are less is because no money is given to school. And I know that that, the township has told you, they'll give you some money. But I was at a meeting there recently, and they were pretty adamant that this was not their responsibility. So I really suggest you get it in writing, because they're not legally obligated to give you any money. Lastly, um... Oh, I had a suggestion. Since there really isn't money for $87 million, and since the cost to taxpayers is over $150,000 for the special election, why don't you cancel the special election? Go back and take a look at this budget and really cut it back. Cut off all the facts. We can't afford it. Nobody can afford it. It should be a food-to-table budget, meaning just what we need to run the school and wait until we have more money till the economy turns around. And you can always reschedule the referendum for the general election, and it won't cost you anything. Thank you.
Hi. So my name is Addison Alt, and I'm speaking on behalf of the robotics team. So we had an occasion to reach out to some board members in the last year or so. And the feedback we got is, who are you guys? Why haven't we seen you? You know, why am I only hearing from you now? So this is the first baby steps we're trying to make to maybe do a little bit of PR and let you guys know who we are and what we're trying to do. So if you didn't know it already, we're kind of a big deal. We, we're one of the oldest teams in New Jersey. Well, not just in New Jersey, in the world. And we've, we've been operating in the school for over 26 years. We've been to the world championships five times, which is no small feat. Our longtime head coach, Ed Petrillo, was involved in setting up First Mid-Atlantic, which is the regional league, I guess, that we all compete in. So we've kind of been something for a while. And I just want to sort of make sure that you all are aware of what's needed for the care and feeding of the robotics team, because we've been operating, you know, kind of on our own, solving our problem, our own problems as they come along. And, and we finally, we, basically, we've hit an inflection point where we actually are gonna need a little bit more support from the district. And I'm gonna make a few specific suggestions in ascending cost from virtually nothing to something, less than $87 million for sure. So one of the main things that we need to understand about a robotics program is how dependent it is on the community. So we've operated with very generous support from corporate sponsors and also from employees of, of, of area companies, not district employees, coming in, you know, parents and empty nesters, working with the team for periods of five, 10, 15, 20 years. You know, very low-key. But we have, you know, we, we've really, we, we've had that generous support for years in different forms, and, and it's something that every robotics team needs. And so this isn't just an issue for our school district. It's an issue for all these teams, is that we're trying to figure out, what does a sustainable team look like? We've been sort of improvising for 25 years. But we, we need to make sure that everybody's sort of on the same page of what a robotic team looks like. And so that means there's gonna be a lot of people in the schools who, who are engineers, who are scientists, who are not necessarily district employees, if we're gonna have a successful program. So the number one thing that we need right now is prep time. So we have really dedicated volunteer mentors who need to get into the shop and get their hands on tools, get their hands on the equipment, and, and work to prepare for mentoring. And then along with that comes access to the IT system. Okay. Well, we don't have to, we don't have to consider anything right now. I'm just giving you a heads-up of what my asks were. So I asked, we've, we've talked to the administration building about this, and we get, we're getting some puckers, like, not sure we can make that happen. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's basically that. We need access to the, to the facility.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other comments?
My name is Anthony Arnone. I live on Pennington Titus Road in Hopewell Township. I've been a neighbor of Timberlane School for four years, I'd like to admit. And I'm mostly concerned about normal activity versus increased activity on the Timberlane field and track. I can remember running the track when it was still a cinder surface. So I've been around a while. My question is, does the footprint of the Timberlane field change in any way? Are you going to extend it? Are you gonna shrink it? I'd like to know what, what your plans are. I have to admit, the first time I learned there was gonna be a referendum was I got a vote-in ballot from the county. That was the first inkling that I had that you were going to go with a bond issue. $87 million is a big nut. And I know that if you get approval for $87 million, you're gonna spend $87 million sooner or later, because you're gonna put that money in a kitty in some manner, and it will be spent. The thing that bothers me about the wording of the referendum is that I can't tell in what category these monies are being spent. For example, what's the difference between the $24.4 million at Timberlane versus the $1.854 at Timberlane? What is the definition of those two monies? If I don't understand that, I'm sure the general public doesn't understand it. I think the, the way this thing is worded, or the way you've explained it up to now, is, is, is kind of, is kind of shy a little bit. We need a more definitive explanation of what those monies mean. I would agree with one of the other speakers in that I, I, I think a little more public relations needs to be done. I'm not totally against spending more money for the school, but I wanna know, what are we going to be getting for it? Are we really gonna be spending the $87 million? Are we gonna be spending the $59 million? What is the difference? I think you need to do a little better public relations job. Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Allison Yakis, Hopewell Township. I have a comment regarding the, the money spent on per pupil. And I've brought this up many times in the past. And I brought this up many times in the past, but it just seems to get, I'm not sure what to do with the microphone. I appreciate the money that we spent on special needs programs and the neurodivergent group. And I can't, my heart goes out to those people and I can't imagine what it must be like. But I have two pretty neurotypical children. And my older son is going into his junior year at high school and just finished honors English. And I'm appalled by how he writes. I don't know how he has made it through his, and I'm terrible for saying this in public about him, but just the quality of the work and the content and incomplete sentences, lack of punctuation, just basic things that I feel like he should have learned in elementary school. It's just jaw dropping to me. So I think we need to relook at what we're doing for the academics regarding neurotypical or whatever you call it and bolster them up as well because, as was mentioned, and I brought it up many times, but it just gets dismissed routinely. What are we doing with our test scores, testing scores and our placement as far as school districts in the state? It's just dropping and dropping and dropping, but no one seems to want to address it. So I'm happy to say that he's going to take advantage of the dual enrollment program and go to Mercer County for English and math this coming year. And hopefully we'll get better results there because maybe he's leaning too much on his pupils and they're sharing work or maybe he had a bad teacher over and over again. I don't know what the problem is, but I just, I feel like that's not looked at and it's a concern. And I'm not the only one who has that concern. On another note, the concept of having a separate election and wasting some $150,000 to hold a special election is a simple example of us acting in a fiscally irresponsible manner. But by say us, I mean whoever selected that choice. You're spending other people's hard earned money and you don't care. And how are we supposed to trust you with $87 million when we can't trust you to recognize that a special election is a waste of our taxpayer dollars? And I'm sorry to repeat the theme here, but in addition, you will not have the same voter turnout. It seems that you're possibly not transparent because we know that most voters will turn out for the general election and we're not going to get that same turnout for the referendum. Is that on purpose or, I'm not sure. But people can't take off another day of work and miss hours of work to go vote for this special referendum. Everyone's working, you know, possibly two jobs, sometimes three jobs in a household to make ends meet. And to ask people to take off another day is just insanity. Also, there are many community members who can't participate in a Zoom, so, in public forum.
We'll try that. Good evening. My name is Karenie Vanco. I live at 200 Pennington-Harberton Road. And I've been at Hopewell here for over 20 years and have seen many changes. I've had two sons go through the system and they make it. I wanted to ask you to look harder at the referendum for needs versus wants. Over the 20 years, we've seen some crazy things. 32 acres of a beautiful wooded lot that had a cross-country trail that was award-winning torn out to put in soccer fields. Do you know how many fields are in the athletic field area right now? Anybody? Okay, I'll tell you. There's of course the track, the football field within the track. There are two baseball fields, a softball field, and seven soccer lacrosse. Are they, do they all have problems with drainage? I don't understand why we need to put in any other types of fields back there. I'm hearing a lot about our test scores. I don't see anything in this referendum that's really going to help the students do better on those scores. Yes, they're for expansion at Bear Tavern and those, talking about planning, those trailers should have been gone a long time ago. I want a board that actually plans, that thinks ahead and doesn't try to sneak something in on us. Because that's what I'm hearing with this referendum. I think back to a problem at General Motors in Trenton. They didn't have any water. Now, this facility was a million square feet, 4,000 people. And if the plant manager had to shut that down, like you're talking about sending kids home in this scare tactic. If he were to send people home, he would have shut down assembly plants across the nation. He didn't do that. He found other ways to fix that. He trucked water in and kept that facility running. I'm thinking, we need to think out of the box, see how to think other ways to satisfy and get through without overtaxing us. So I'm asking that perhaps you take another look at this 87 million and think of other ways that it could be spent a little bit different. Thank you.
Oops, sorry. Seeing no other comments, we'll kind of bounce around here to address some of the... I just wanted to take a quick note. Bob, do you want to address the process for bringing on a new board member?
Sure. You know, again, it was mentioned this hap, this is the third time this has happened. I mean, that's, it happens from time to time that board members decide to roll off the board for one reason or another. The latest one, she moved out of the district, an unanticipated move out of the district. The board advertised for candidates. I don't have the dates in front of me. It was probably three weeks or so that we gave people to submit applications. We did get two applications, one from Ms. Tracy and one from Ms. Cotter. Both were interviewed on that evening, both in public. At the conclusion that the board deliberated, we came back out into public session. There was nobody in the hallways when we opened up the board and the board voted for Ms. Tracy. I believe the vote, it's in the minutes, tonight's minutes, I believe there were, there were six board members there that night. Drew had to leave. I think it was five for Ms. Tracy and one abstention. I'm sure he's not Mr. Slotman abstained.
She identified so far.
Yeah, overall, there was a decrease between the two, between 23 data and 24 data. But I just want to highlight that this is just one assessment that is 90 minutes for ELA and 90 minutes for math. And I know for math, it's 35 questions and I'm assuming it's similar for ELA. So we're just, you know, taking into consideration what that, how the format of this assessment. And we have internal benchmarks that we've been utilizing that the students are doing better on. So I, you know, I just, you know, there seems to be a disconnect between what NGGPA is assessing and what our benchmarks are assessing, even though they are both based on the New Jersey state standards. So I just want to put that out there. The other thing I want to acknowledge too is that last year was the first year that the assessment was rolled out and we received no data besides the actual scores of the students. This year, at least, we received the standard breakdown. So it's baby steps. So this year, we're going to take a closer look at what, how the standards are and how our students are doing.
So you don't actually have year-to-year comparison other than the top number because you didn't get as much data?
Exactly. Yep.
And just to clear some things up, this is not a failing district. This district is rated in the top 30 out of 660-plus school districts in the state of New Jersey. We're in the top 30. Yes, Princeton's number two. I'd like to be number two also. I like, I'm always pushing us. Yes, yes. But we are in the, we are one of the top performing school districts of the state of New Jersey and we're written up every year in Newsweek. This is a top performing district. Yes, our kids need to write better as a former English teacher, driving me crazy. So we're working very closely with adopting a new writing program this year because we do need to focus on our writing. I do want to see our kids improve with that. A lot of that is this and we're in the short way they write and social media and it's translating into the academic writing. But that's something that we're working on with our curriculum and also with resources to support all of our students in improving their writing scores. I just wanted to clear that up because that was something that I think is a misconception. We are not underperforming as a district, we're one of the top districts. Yes, we can always do better.
Yes. And I think the other point around gen ed, we talk, we do talk a lot about how we support and structure our special ed programs and it is unique, so we do talk about it more. However, I know there is a lot of work being done for gen ed to look at scores, especially coming out of COVID. So that's not going to stop and it also isn't a turn on the dime moment. We are addressing multiple layers. Last year was a lot about mental health and wellbeing and trying to acclimate our students to just the environment of teaching and education again. So there are many layers of coming at this. We've got kids in the school district that have unfortunately had a core part of their education hit by COVID, right? We have sixth graders lost, you know, a core part of their middle school. We got freshmen that had a core part of their high school year. So we are absolutely catching up and there is, there is work to be done. That is a full stop acknowledgement. So thank you for addressing that.
There was a question from Ms. Ruhl after the interviews about the pilot. And I know she stepped out, but I do want to talk about just a little bit. We have had ongoing meetings with all of the mayors from the municipalities. We had a meeting not too long ago with Hopewell Township. They expressed again that they are willing to help support it, but they're in litigation and they can't give us a number. We cannot force the township to do anything, to your point. We can't. So we're going to keep having the conversations. We're going to keep, you know, making our requests. But again, we have, we can't go on promises and pipe dreams. We have to address the problems that we're facing, which are significant. Yes.
I just want to make sure I underscore that. 61% of the budget for that 80-plus million is infrastructure. It's not, it's not, it's roofs, it's doors, it's security. It's not about the 9% of the turf field. So I want to be clear that there is no kind of slipping anything out or under or not being transparent. There was a referendum, how many years ago?
2016.
2016, the budget, that was planning. That was not planning. There was no tolerance for the original referendum number. It was sliced in half. So the planning opportunity is now, this is what the district is trying to provide, is advanced planning for the future such that there isn't a building shutdown. So I just, I know there's a feeling that we're being a particular way, but I want to underscore that the board has really challenged the administration to look at the future challenges with our buildings and plan ahead, which is why we are where we are. If we didn't plan ahead, we could get by with far less. But if you look at what's left on that slide that had the 15 million on it and you have 2% for capital projects, 2% is not going to cover a roof for every building that's leaking. So even if we waited and did projects as we are able, we would be years out and exponentially more expensive for inflation to do the roofs and the very basics that we're trying to make sure are in place for our children. So.
Yes, and absolutely. And the lack of investment then, us kind of saying, we don't have a tolerance, let's cut it in half. Let's talk about this. And we cut it in half and now those things are back and they're double the cost, some of those things. Some of those things are double the cost. It's the lead time to get them. And I know there was a comment about the scare tactic of Timber Lane. There was no water in the building. You cannot have a building open without flushing toilets without water. There was no water. So there's no bussing in water and shipping in water for that. You have to close. The state will have us close because it's against code to have a building with no water in it for toilets and drinking or anything like that. That was real. The fire trucks out in front of Stony Brook were real as were the fire trucks in front of Bear Tavern and the raining in the building. The turf field to me is safety. I don't like our kids being out there and playing on fields that are unsafe for them to run on because there's holes in them and things like that or there's drainage problems or missing half their season, all of these things. We're talking about building in the footprint of where the fields are. We're not putting new fields. They're building right on top of what's already there. And the 9% that you're talking about in that pie is not just the turf field, it's also the concession stand. And 1.6 million of that is going to be covered by, the turf field is going to be covered by the state funding that's offered. That is monies that other districts are getting a hold of and going to referendum on as well. Us getting out ahead of that and being able to go out to bid sooner than later will help us build sooner than later. Kids are already coming. 14 kids we already had come. We have kids come left and right to Bear Tavern. It's getting very tight over there. And the longer we wait, the longer it would take for us to start building. And we're going to be going out with everyone else to bid and that makes it even tougher to get better pricing. So that's why we're trying to do this earlier than later because that's just putting us further behind on things that ought to have been addressed, a lot of these things, before now. But it's sort of, we didn't have a tolerance, we're going to kick the can, but we still want all these other great things that we have, which cost money. And it's getting harder and harder with a flat budget to support these growing, growing changes to our infrastructure because we're not keeping up with it.
And I just, I want to avoid sounding defensive, but I want to give some comparison. So there was a comparison about Princeton versus us or price per student. So Princeton's going to have a referendum, correct? And it's 100 and, oh.
I don't know. They just did one and they're doing another one.
So.
And they just did one before that for another, right?
Yeah. So I want to, we're not in isolation, one. We're, this is not a fun thing, nobody signs up for it. But there are, there are school districts that are out there that it is part of their three to five-year plan to referendum smaller buckets of money. Now, three to five years doing this every year, I don't know that anybody has a tolerance for that. But that is what others are doing. And ours is far smaller than some of the folks that Bob talks to on a regular basis. So we're being compared to Princeton. Okay, we're not ranked as high, but there are other things that are, we need to talk about in context and what it's taking them to run their own school district. So we really just have to look at what is in front of us and being responsible. You all, you know, asked for this board to be responsible and we are being fiscally responsible by telling you the truth about the building and the state of the building. And I would love to be able to say that this could be done over time. Now, again, 83 or 87, I feel like the number, 87 million is the number that we're asking. Now, again, 83 or 87, I feel like the number, 87 million is the number that we're asking for, but it is going to be bonded over time. So it's not a big bunch of money that's going to land in our bank account and then we get to spend it however we want. Every time we are ready for a project, we've got to define the project, get the money, bond the money and, well, well, the, in chunks, but to cover a set number of projects and we can't do projects outside of that. So it is controlled, there's, there's no slush fund.
And to answer, go further with that question, are, these accounts are audited rigorously by our, by our auditor and reported back to the state. The question itself doesn't have room to list every project out. On our website, there are every project that we're going to be doing and an estimate of a cost, the general estimate, not each piece, doesn't break it down into the, into the granular like that some folks have been answered, but it gives a general estimate on how much the HVAC is going to cost, how much the roofing is going to cost. All of those things have been broken out and they're on that website that Dr. Trese pointed out. We cannot deviate. We can't take that money that we earmark for HVAC and roofing and do anything else with it. Cannot do anything else with it. We are, like I said, the, those projects are audited and, and deep questions are asked about each and every project. There are certified payrolls that are, I mean, it's, 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 it's a huge undertaking to make sure that the money is spent within the parameters that we have told everybody. That the ballot can't begin to answer the questions. It's got a lot of legalese that the state requires. Those questions are developed by attorneys, but they're state attorneys and we have to, we have to fit our question into that mold. No, it's not done to confuse or anything like, that's why there's a PowerPoint and pages and pages of items on our website that explain in detail what we are planning to do.
Can you address the comments about September?
So the, the first time we, it's interesting what the, what the county will say because Dr. Trese and I were with the election officials from Mercer County and they said it was no issue for them at all. They were enthused about it, said that's why they, they suggested we do it at one location. It would be convenient for everybody in the town and they'd be able to staff it easily. I first reached out to Mercer County Clerk on February 28th. I was looking it up on my email as, as the questions were going, to let them know that we were considering a September referendum. The cost estimates that I have total somewhere in the area of 75,000. Yes, it's, it's an expensive undertaking to do a special election. We understand that. The benefit to us, as we've said for the last, you know, Dr. Trese talked about it, President Galeano talked about it, is to be able to get out in front of everybody else who may be delaying to a November election, a January election, a December election, is we're ahead of them and we'll be able to get out to bid and get contractors, competition among contractors, before everybody else has either a successful referendum or, or a negative referendum. It's hard to put a number on that to see if we're going to save the 75,000 by going out early, but when we've gone out early and we go out on, early on all of our summer projects that we do, we seem to get more people willing to bid and the competition increases. A lot of times when you wait until after a referendum and you don't go out until the spring for a summer project, you don't get anybody to bid, or you get somebody who's willing to throw a number out there and to see how desperate you are to take it. So we're going on the advice of historical from our, our financial people, our, our engineers and architects who do this for a living, who, who go out to bid hundreds of times a year. And they said that the best time for you guys to go out for these types of projects is in September.
Thank you. I think I recovered everything. Did anybody pick up anything we have not addressed?
Robotic.
Oh, we're about, first. Yeah. And I think, I'm glad you came though. It's wonderful to.
Mr. Arnon, I'm not sure what, there's no plans for the field that's behind your house. That's, we're not doing anything there other than, you know, the use that it is at, at the current time.
Well, there was another question about allowing other folks to use the fields. As it is, folks, the community rec, travel teams, tournaments are played on the, the high school turf. And that's a lot of wear and tear on that one field. This would spread that out. They would have access to this as people still have access to our PAC. Our PAC is still being used by the community. The Children's Theater, for example, have been in there all summer. We don't let just everybody run through because we do want to maintain our equipment.
Yes.
Yes, right, because they were being a little rough on our stuff, right? But no, we do, the community still uses the PAC and it's still available for community use. Some of it, they pay for the rental, some of it, if it's a project that we're partnering with, we just let them use the space. So the PAC is still available.
So just yet to go to further, we, we have eliminated groups that we don't know. We have had, we, we have a great relationship with a lot of the places within the community that use our fields and our spaces, but we found that when there were groups that didn't have a nexus here in Hopewell, they were less than nice to our, kind to our facilities. The folks who are within our boundaries treat our facilities extremely well, the basketball groups, the soccer groups, we have no issues with them. And there is a considerable amount of rental income that we generate each year. Mr. Becker and I have met with all of the organizations. Mr. Slotman put us in touch with some folks and we've been in touch with all of them and they're all interested in using those fields understandably at a rental fee to them. They're not expecting to be able to use them at no cost, but they are thrilled about the possibility of having additional space for their organizations as well that also have issues with weather, both in the fall, winter, and spring. It would be a year-round facility. So there would be anticipated rental income that would be discussed as if this was successful, but it's not, you know, and that's where we left it with these groups. They're willing to have discussions with us once, once and if it passes.
Awesome. There is one other comment or, yeah, I guess, a comment about the trailers. And there had been historically a conversation about moving out of them, specifically at Bear Tavern and then over at, at Tollgate. The challenges are that there are no places in, the only option would be to be replacing them and the, the ultimate decision was to refurbish them because we couldn't build the space at the time to bring the kids in. So the alternative is at this time, without doing any additions, is to either refurbish or replace and keep using them. So the objective we have is twofold. One is the security issue. The second is safety for our first responders. And thirdly, to make sure that our children are getting the quality of education in the building with their peers.
Now, while we're going to tear down, if this goes through, the trailers at Tollgate, the ones at Bear will remain. We've spent a lot of time keeping those up and refurbishing and maybe bringing, updating the air conditioning units in those. So we're going to keep that space used for additional office space and storage, which is always a challenge here in the district where we store things. So that continues to be something.
Better for adults that are coming and going.
Yes.
District-wide versus on campus.
Yes.
Got it. Okay. Any, sorry?
Can I save your name?
Sure.
Okay, cool.
Or is it covered in your, in your?
No.
Okay.
No. No, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna reiterate a couple of things that you guys said, but you tend to be very diplomatic, so. I'll just start with a ballot question. I nearly punched a hole in the wall. I don't know who wrote that. I hope it's not a Hopeful Valley graduate because it's badly written. If you want to know what's down to certainly tens of thousands of dollars, the money's being allocated for in detail, go to that slide, that slide deck on the webpage. And that slide deck, which was first presented in February, literally shows every single project and when it comes to roofs. They've identified the roofs that were fixed as part of the last referendum. So you can see that there's no overlap, but that's the part that shows down in fairly serious amount of detail what the stuff is going to get spent on. On the robotics club, I do know who you guys are. At least some of the board members do. I, I, I know who you guys are very well. What else did I want to say? On the, on the pilot, because I know that quite a few of you have been coming here and speaking about the pilot and I'm always kind of, how much can I say about my own viewpoint and it not cross the ethics boundary, but I will say whatever I think about the pilot. It's pretty clear that we as a district have very little leverage. What is true is that Rosetta and Anita and some of the rest of us, as of late, have been having a lot of conversations with the township. You know, you can agree or disagree whether we've taken quite a right approach, but there has been a lot of attempts to talk to them. Some of them have been successful, some probably less successful. We as a district legally have no leverage, as far as I know, over the township. Yeah. They put out a press release where they've stated their intentions. I'm going to hope and pray that they're going to stick to it. But that's as much as I, I as a board member can do as far as I'm aware. And then the last comment I wanted to make about the issue of planning ahead and the test scores and the referendum. I didn't, I was going to make some comments, but Mark, he's into them, so. When we're talking about the test scores, I do think it is an issue. Then, you know, I take seriously the comment about planning ahead and I'm going to throw the previous boards and administrations under the bus, right? Let's say they didn't. But when we approached this issue and we first looked at the need to expand, which would have called for a referendum anyway, you can't build out of whatever you think is possible. We looked at it and we said, let's take, since we have to go to a referendum anyway and we're going to get ourselves beat up one way or another, let's take this opportunity and try to get ahead at least of the known problem. And so that's what the majority of this referendum is, 60% of it, it's us trying to get ahead of the known problems right now. That doesn't mean that there is going to be a big bill that's going to be coming due, but it's, it, those problems are going to come.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and move on with the agenda and go through committee highlights of committee updates. Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, given the comments, I am officially closing public comments. Moving on, Alex, finance.
Oh.
Oh, sorry, my bad. All my notes covered a bunch of things. Okay, so opening for any old business items. Moving on, I need a first and second on consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed or abstaining? Consent agenda items passed? Okay, now we can move on to finance.
All right, finance. So those of you who are wondering where some of that money in the reserve is going, I'm, I'm going to try and kind of get to these in some particular reasonable order. There had to be concrete work done at Bear Tavern and Stony Brook to replace some fully deteriorated steps, do a bit of recreating to address the flooding that was happening to make sure that the water goes out of the buildings. I did ask Tom Quinn whether that will allow us to take some of that money out of the referendum because we do have some concrete work at Stony Brook in the referendum. And he said, no, what he's able to do right now with the budget that he has is basically just the bare minimum to get us to a point where we can use the building. A permanent solution that'll keep us from having to hopefully deal with this issue every few months is what we have in the referendum because that needs a lot of money.
Actually, just what he did was save the building.
Right.
We did. Water did get in, but it deferred enough of the water that it didn't flood.
Yeah. The TMS sewer work, or as I like to call it, the Big Dig, the in-building work is complete, but there were, once they dug things up, they discovered issues that were additional to the, the actual reason why things were dug up. So there were some delays. So we'll be able to open the building for the kids, but there will be bathrooms that they will not be able to use, which means kids are going to be having to go from one, from one wing of the building to a different wing to use the bathrooms. We talked about the impact on whether this means that these kids that will have actually an unusable wing. No, the wing is, so the classrooms are going to remain usable. There might be a little bit of a delay that teachers will have to deal with with kids coming back to class. You know, the, the periods in between classes are not very long and so we have a whole bunch of kids going from one wing to another to use the bathroom. There might be some delays there and that is likely to persist for a couple of months during the fall. We've had boiler problems at Tollgate that were addressed by fixing the boilers. There was a sewer line at Hopewell Elementary that was leaking. That's something that we're going to be able to fix. And how Bear Tavern has these old sewer lines that apparently cannot be cleaned properly the second or the third time this year, that we're mentioning this. So there is two kindergarten rooms where some of the sinks cannot be used because those lines can't be cleared. Let's see. I saved one. Oh, yeah, the admin building. There's going to be an over-the-ground pipe for a while while we try to fix the sewer issue between the, between the transportation building back there and this building. And that's something that, again, came up because the old, the old galvanized pipes are breaking and we need to have the water line while we're getting a new one in. One piece of good news, we're changing all the lighting to LED lighting. And so the Tollgate gym is down, the Hopewell Elementary is in progress, and Tom was able to get some kind of grants where it is a dollar per light bulb, per fixture. Oh, wow, even better. So we're saving money on the light bulbs and then we're going to save money on the electricity. I don't think that's going to make that much of a difference in, in our budget, but it is a piece of good news. So that's the facilities review for the month. We had a, also then, a lengthy presentation from the Climate Action Transportation Subcommittee. So for those of you folks who don't know, we had a Climate Action, that Hot Committee that's been running for like two years? Three? Has it been? Three? Been for a while, and they came back with an extensive report that is, they gave us a summary of it at the last meeting, all the details have been presented at different board committees. So this one, this was the first one for the finance and facilities. They had identified, oh, so the subcommittee report was 17 pages that contains seven actions. So we had a long discussion which actions the, the climate committee can really start pursuing, because there were quite a few there that they could just start getting to work on their own, which actions we really needed to look into some more because of potential costs involved that just have to go about. This is going to be a long process. And yet the goal is to try and find most neutral, most positive ways of going about these things. And the other thing I wanted to, to just give a heads up to my fellow committee members, we've been running over time again and again and again. So when we go to schedule things, I'm going to ask you to think about an hour and a half slot for the next committee meeting, because there were things on the agenda that we deferred twice.
So I've had the pleasure of sitting in this committee for about eight months, and I think hopefully what Alex's presentation made clear is that we're, we're holding things together with like Band-Aids and duct tape, right? I mean, the, the facilities group is doing such an amazing job, but they're just fixing things as we go. And I hope this really emphasizes the need for this referendum to really preserve the, the health and safety of our kids.
Just, I, I'd like to add just something to that. I mean, it's been, it came up a couple of times in our, in our public comment that the district doesn't plan. And we have presented a facilities report every summer for the past five or six years that discusses the things that we've done. And I'm, I'm like the committee members, long time, first time, that the, the level of detail which I think that we plan and look ahead is very thorough. The money isn't there to implement the plan and we've discussed again in public during budget time, there isn't money left over in the budget after it goes towards what it's supposed to go towards, which is the education of our children. There isn't money left over to put towards. So the money that you see that we've squirreled away, and that's really squirreled it away, it's taken time to get to that. Eight million dollars is nothing compared to the cost of doing a single roof or a single HVAC project, which is why we, with great trepidation, brought to the finance committee the initial seeds of a referendum last summer. There just isn't money in the budget to save due to all the other things that have been driven up since COVID that have taken from that. Tom Quinn's facilities budget has not been increased in greater than 10 years, and that, except for salaries. And we have an increased staff in that area. It's the same number of staff, and their increase in salaries is contracted, but there's been no real additional money put towards fixing things. We've been very fortunate to have folks on staff who can fix things.
I was, I was just kind of ready to say, I mean, I think the other, a thing to underscore is that the work that is getting done is largely done within house resources. So we're talking materials, we're, you know, because we already pay them, we already pay them a salary. So we're very blessed in that regard that we have a very talented and well-certified facilities team. And we, we have short start, we're starting to see people retire, so backfilling people with those skill sets is becoming a challenge, which means we have to go outside of our, our employees to get things repaired. But there has been a significant savings over time by using our own in-house folks, so that's.
I'd say the small work, things like the Big Dig, that's something we can't do.
Well, sure, we can't, but, but to find, but also to assess the problem, and they dug up, they did a lot of crawling and digging here, so.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. So it is skilled work. Plumbers and electricians are all on staff. Anyway, okay. Thank you. Oh, okay. Did you?
Oh, no, I'm just.
Oh, getting ready for personnel. Okay, awesome. Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right. I was getting nervous. I was like.
We're moving over here.
Awesome. I see you. Thank you.
Do you want me to go? Okay, great.
All right, so we are our normal meeting that we have right prior to this meeting. A lot of the normal agenda items for this time of year came up. We talked about the appointments for the extracurricular activities. We talked about some of the waiver items that you'll see on the agenda. A lot of that's very basic that you would see year over year, many of you in the audience, or if you're listening at home, would normally see. We also did accept the retirement of Mr. Bielato. Okay, Bielato, yep, who has been here for almost 30 years, so we thank him a lot for all of his service to the community and obviously are always sad to see him go, but he has more than earned it. So that's very, very exciting. That's about it from, from my end. So if there's not any questions, happy to keep the agenda moving along.
Can, can you just characterize, can you characterize some of the this time, things this year, time of year?
On this go-around, it was just the extracurricular appointments as well as the waivers that are on the agenda. So we had a couple of minutes of a discussion on that, nothing major.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you got it.
Also, we're going to need a first and second to pass the appointments
Yes, we will.
in the personnel, and we'll vote on that. And roll call. First and second?
First.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Gopadia. Dr. Lilis. Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Dr. Resnick.
Yes.
Mr. Slotman. Ms. Tracy.
Yes.
Dr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano.
Yes.
I'll, I'll give the report, but just jump in, members. So we met last week. Mr. Umstead and Mr. Harding, who is the band director at the high school, presented in a proposed field trip to Florida during the first week of December. There were some questions about the students potentially missing four days of school and also the fact that there would be about seven or eight chaperones out, so those teachers would be out, and how would that impact the students who were staying behind? We are still in the process of collecting more data to see if perhaps we can have the field trip happen during a spring break, and we're surveying parents to see if that would be in interest for, for the parents. So more information to come. Ms. Riley, the principal of the high school, was present at our meeting, and she spoke about the scheduling process, including the timeline, number of sections available, and access to certain courses based on grade level. We talked about the NJGPA achievement report that was presented today, and then we also talked about proposed agenda items for, for the rest of the year.
Any comments or questions from the rest of the board? Okay, thank you, Dr. Politz. All right, moving on to community relations, Mike? Thank you. Any questions or comments from the rest of the board?
I just have one comment, and Mike, Dr. Wilson, I followed up with you via email about this, but it looked like the notes were really focused on strengthening our relationship with parents, which I think is incredibly important. And I would love for us as a board to really think about how we can also strengthen our relationship with students and really uplifting their voices in the decisions that we're making.
Thank you for that. All right, moving on to SEL.
Yeah, we had a brief meeting and we discussed different ways to assess our current social-emotional programming and practices across the district. We had a longer discussion about the climate survey and using that as an important tool to just obtain feedback regarding, again, the different programming that we provide to support the social-emotional learning of our children. And I also shared the different meetings that I've been having in the last several weeks with community collaboration of mental health agencies that work to support and collaborate and provide training and support our students throughout the school year.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the rest of the board? Just to clarify, the agents, those meetings you were having were to shore up our relationships so we have support for our students during the year. Thank you. All right, don't believe we have anything for climate action. Update, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, no. All right, thank you. Moving on to policy, Dr. Lilis.
Sure, and we have a relatively short agenda here for policy today. So the policy committee met on August 5th, and we were joined by Ms. Donardo, Ms. Tanna Smith, and Assistant Principal Smith. Assistant Principal Smith joined us to discuss some proposed provisions to the student code of conduct. One of the things he reported to the committee was that we've really seen a drop in repeat offenses since we introduced increased use of restorative justice practices to the student code of conduct. So he wanted to make some revisions with his fellow administrators to increase our use of those practices for additional infractions. That said, when we had a chance to review the markup, the committee did have some additional questions. So for that reason, we're actually going to be reconvening next month and discussing it a bit more, and then hopefully bring it forward for a first read in September. So with that said, we only have one policy up for first reading tonight. This is P-8420, emergency and crisis situations. So can I have a motion and second to move policy 8420 up for first reading? Okay, thanks. So this policy was last revised by the board in April 2022, so essentially it ensures that our district has comprehensive written plans and procedures in place to provide for the health, safety, and security of the school population, as well as in response to emergency and crisis situations. It also requires that school staff are trained on emergency response protocols and that drills take place to prepare students and staff in the case of an emergency. So in January of this year, a new state law was passed that amended the previous law related to emergency planning in public schools. And essentially, the amendment ensured that the unique needs of students with disabilities were really considered, considered in the emergency planning processes and that these students are able to fully participate in our emergency drills. So in alignment with this amendment, the committee's proposing a couple revisions to policy 8420. So if you're following along on your computers, on page one, you can see that we've made revisions to address the requirement that our school safety and security plans address the unique needs of students with disabilities during fire drills, school security drills, and emergency situations, in alignment with the amended state legislation. On page two, we've added new language requiring staff training to include procedures for accommodating students with disabilities during drills and emergency situations. And then last, on page three, revisions require that the details around the supports and accommodations that are needed for students with disabilities during fire and school security drills and in actual emergencies are included in the students' IEPs, 504 plans, and service plans. So I'll just note that during our review of this policy, Ms. Donardo did indicate that all of these provisions are currently part of our standard operating procedures in the, in the district. So really, what we're doing here is just codifying the procedures that are already in place. So do my policy colleagues have anything else to add to that? Okay, any questions? Please.
Approaches to address students' inquiries and concerns, but that's sort of reactive. I'd like to see something more proactive, something more and we're dealing pretty well with special ed kids, but the whole population is going to be having, is possible, there are kids possibly having problems with some of the ideation of, of being in different kinds of unsecure situations. That's just my concern. And I'm not sure that this is the right policy to do that in, but it seemed like it was sort of positioned.
So I'm not a, a building principal, but I know, you know, from a special ed and counseling perspective, we do work hard to address and prepare our staff and our special classes and students that we know are triggered by these types of drills. No, not necessarily. Well, I'm talking like in the counseling office, you know, our counselors kind of, we, we know just from experiences if they've had issues at the elementary level, and, you know, we, we identify them and our, our counselors work with them, if needed. I just mean we do it.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure if it's necessarily needed in the policy. I think that would be your decision. But it's as part of our protocols, how things are described to students, we follow very specific curriculum basically for our protocols for safety drills and things like that, and they are age appropriate. So there are different ways to describe the different types of drills that we do with the different age bands. And so that, you know, they're, they're done in a way that is, is age appropriate, and then the counselors are also often part of those conversations. So they're available if, if a student is having. Yeah, we don't necessarily have a, a survey feedback on students at all age, age groups, if that's what you mean, but there, there is the conversations that are taking place, the follow-up. Yeah, yeah, I would say that that is accurate.
Any other questions or comments on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. So can I have a motion and a second to move policy and regulation 2200 curriculum content and 9270 up for a second reading? Okay, great. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these because they were reviewed in depth at our July full board meeting. But just a quick reminder here, policy and regulation 220 relate to our oversight of the school district's curriculum, so they essentially ensure that the curriculum is consistent with the educational goals of our district, as well as the state's student learning standards. So the revisions that you see here are primarily incorporating updates from the New Jersey Department of Education and renaming things like the core curriculum content standards as the student learning standards, so just sort of aligning with the, the language that's currently used. And then for 9270, this policy and regulation lays out the rules and regulations around children who receive education through homeschooling or private schools outside of the public school system. So we received no revisions to either of these policies.
So we received no revisions to either of these policies and regulations after our first reading, but are there any questions or comments on these? Policy committee colleagues, did I miss anything? Okay. Do you need to roll call box? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Yep, so I need a first and second to review August and September calendars. 8:00 AM would be preferable for me, if that's possible. Uh, yep, 12 is fine.
Have it the 16th at 6 o'clock, as usual. Finance, I was going to say that we have the forum on the 9th, so we can't do that night unless you want to do it during the day, and that's not going to work. So it's going to say 5 o'clock on the 10th.
On?
September 10th.
I'm not able to do that. Is there another time that might work?
Uh, the 11th?
That's fine.
At 5? Whenever it ends. We'll schedule two hours. Be a quick one this time.
Five. Yeah, right?
No, we're not, no.
No.
Vicky?
That's, that's, that's. Yes, and then some of us are going to be meeting in three hours.
Okay, is that no? Just saying.
12, 6:30?
Uh, September 9th or? Okay, what do you have? That's fine for me, too. What day were you talking on, sorry? You said the 9th? Maybe a 1 or 2.
No, yeah, I was like, I thought we just said 9th.
Stay away from the 9th.
Yeah.
We look at the 13th? Oh, sorry, is the full board meeting, it's 23rd? Uh, the 13th study is pretty close.
He, what about the 6th?
Maybe the week before, how about the 6th? Yeah.
6th is doable.
Okay, maybe 1?
Yeah, 4th, 5th.
Can you do it? 4, 4 o'clock? 4 o'clock on the 6th?
4th or 5th?
Talking about, yeah?
This is it for, no, it's not.
4th or 5th? Yeah, hold on one. Sure, you want to do the 4th or 5th? Yeah.
One more, sorry.
12, that's 1 o'clock. Uh, yes, I can.
Okay. All right. Oh. So voting, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. Calendars are passed. Any new business items? Okay, seeing none. We're going to move on to our second public comment, and as a reminder, members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion, excuse me, of the meeting. You're asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting, so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask that you sign in prior to speaking, and this will assist us with our record-keeping. We have our timekeeper, and public comments are now open.
Kate Hamm, my first question is, will the presentation on NJGPA be available on the district website? It's really difficult when many other things are linked to the agenda, so those of us who are using the digital version of the agenda can open and see things that you're referring to. So it's difficult when things like that are not linked, so we can't see, but I'm not here to harp, but I'm still looking for open communication, transparency, and clarification when, and I have screenshots of the slides that I could catch, but I'm looking at the overall readiness in math performance for the district. In 2023, it was 83.5% that were ready and 16.5% that were not graduation-ready. In 2024, that 83.5% went down to 76.7%, and the not-graduation-ready number went up to 23.3%. So I'm a little confused, and every other bar graph after that indicated the same thing, that there was a increase in not-graduation-ready from '23 to '24, and so I'm looking for some additional clarification, as well as the entire presentation put on the district website and linked, so that I and others can dissect all of these. The same for the overall readiness for English and language arts. The 2023 graduation-ready number was 88.6%, and though it didn't fall much, it did fall to 86.4%. That increases the not-graduation-ready number. So I am still going to continue to ask for clarification and transparency on being told that there was an increase in readiness, when the bar graphs definitely show that there has been a decrease in graduation readiness for our students. Thank you.
Hi, Allison Yakis, again. I apologize, I was cut off earlier because I ran out of time for my unplanned commentary. I just wanted to bring to your attention that there's a population in the community that may or may not have access to or the skill set required to use Zoom and the online platform for the next referendum discussion, and I'm just wondering, since we're way past the time of COVID, why that's not being done in person for our senior population and those who don't have computers or laptops at home and/or can't use it for whatever reason. I just think it'd be fair for everyone in general for there to be a public forum, because there are, I've seen the commentary online, and there are a lot of community members that don't know about any of this, and it's because they don't have, they're not, it's not user-friendly for them. They're not on social media, they're not online, and so I just want to know how we can address meeting the needs of our senior members and whoever else may not be able to access a Zoom, and we could allow for open discussion and public commentary from the general public. And in addition to that, how that could be broadcasted, so people would know they could attend something like that, because people still don't know about it, unfortunately. Thank you.
Pins and needles about what the ask was. So, so it's pretty, so with access, I mean, building use, we've been using building reuse requests, but they aren't perfect. You have to do it a week in advance, and they also leave the room open while they're, you know, they open it up before you come in, and that's probably the most attractive room in the school, as far as mischief. It would make much more sense if one of us had a key, one of us did have a key before Parkland, it was taken away. So that's against district policy right now, for a volunteer to have a key. So we, I just hope we can start thinking about that. Next thing that's against district policy for a volunteer to have is login credentials for the school network. And so we can't use AV equipment, 3D printers, the laser cutters, there's a whole host of things on the network that we are beholden to. One of the paid coaches who works at HBRSC, it would really be helpful for the team to be able to get access to that. Third thing that's against district policy right now, as far as I know, is using, for instance, Slack. So Slack is HIPAA and per, it's compliant with the various statutes, but my understanding is we can't just go use that. We need to get approval from the board or from the IT people or whoever, and as far as I understand, that's not, there's not really a good process for that right now. So those are the three things that are, they should be free or near free, but they're kind of a pain. And so that's what we're trying to talk to the administrators about. And so I can send that an email, but I just didn't want to leave everybody hanging.
Any ones? Okay, seeing no additional. I did want to correct Ms. Hamm, it was, I was, if I misspoke, my apologies, it was that 24, 23 did go down in '24, so the numbers you're reciting are correct. And while we were talking, Dr. Treese put a link on the, on the agenda, so it should be there now, that you can pull it up. And, and, and of course, as always, encourage all of us to continue to ask questions around what we're doing. There's nothing more important. No?
We are posting that in another place on the website as well, right? So once, after this board, after the board examines it, then we have to post it, and it'll be on, under CNI, where the other tests are posted. And in terms of robotics, I will be in touch with you. I'm going to say no probably to Slack, because we have to use district platforms, because we have to store all that information on our servers, and Slack is not, is outside of our realm, but we can talk about some of the other.
Well, there's, if it's not Slack, there could be something else, yeah. And then, did you want to comment on the Zoom?
Oh, yes, thank you, please, I do. Miss Yakis, the problem is, is we've kicked back and forth a hybrid, and I'm still open to exploring that with Mr. Colavita. You see how great our equipment is? I just really worry about trying to run a hybrid situation, because our parents prefer us doing virtual, because, you know, when they're getting home with the kids at that hour, trying to get dinner started, getting homework started, getting kids to bed, they want it recorded, which I agree, but then there's this piece where, you know, folks want it in person, so I'll, I'm going to explore an option where we maybe can do both, but I, you know, I'm just concerned about the quality of the video we're going to get out of that, but we can work on that. I commit to working on that, because I do understand some people like it in person as well.
Any other comments? I think we should, maybe we should all remove this little thing. Seemed to work over there. All right. Okay. Any other comments from the board or questions? All right, seeing none, we, public comments are closed, and we're now going to, I need a first and second to move into executive session. All right. Oh, okay, so I need to read. So any pending or anticipated, oh, sorry. Okay, so any, so just, this statement is really just to let you know what may be discussed during our executive session, and right now it is a special ed legal matter. That will be discussed, no, no action will be taken. So... Oh, action will be taken, sorry. And so there's a, after, okay, gotcha. I need a first and second? I didn't, I didn't know if you captured it, sorry. And so all in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? Thank you, public, appreciate you.